Yes. Sound.
Yeah, yeah.
Here it goes.
Bob, say something. I shut that one off.
Estine, can you hear us? Ah, there we go. Judy can hear us now.
Sorry about that, Judy. When I claimed host on this one, it muted that one.
Okay. I just needed to get your.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to see.
There we go. As we were saying, further discussion. Uh, you want to go with the town manager or?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
Who was the second on that one? Not Nike guy. I had a summary page drafted, but I didn't bring it up here. So um, most of public works on the public works, I think most of public works uh. Efforts this month, obviously, we've had quite a few little storms, so they've been focused on that, making sure the trucks are. Appable. We've had some that are down due to. Certain issues during storms. At one point during one of the storms, we had one truck running and or one big truck running and a pickup. Or the one ton running while we were working on fixing the other. We're in pretty good shape right now. Um, I think he had already reported that the sand pile is already fully stocked. They participated in refresher training for winter operations focusing on safety procedures, equipment handling and plow routes. Uh, public works did go and take down the batting cage net, so we won't lose it in the winter. So. I appreciate that. It was going to be long here otherwise. They managed to do it pretty quickly. Preston's monitoring his, his uh budget for overages. With that said. We had a seventy five thousand dollar maintenance budget this year. We had that one truck that ran us about thirty thousand dollars. So our maintenance budget has pretty much been expended with the repairs, which is. Going to happen with these older trucks. Um, I know in other meetings preventative maintenance has come up. We do more preventative maintenance than I've ever done in the four years that I've been here. Um. So as we progressively stay with these trucks, the maintenance is going to continue to add up. Um, so that's just something to be aware of. Um, obviously throughout this month, they're going to continue with snow plowing and salting as necessary. When they get the opportunity, they'll patch any bad potholes. I've had a couple reported to me. Um. When they get the chance, they'll fill those in. No staffing changes. We all are still fully staffed. Buckfield Rescue had thirty five calls in the month of November, which puts them at a total of three hundred and ninety nine for the year, which is higher than last year. Uh, I think we finished last year with three eighty five from that ballpark, so we're going to go way over that. Um, twenty two calls are in Buckfield, eleven in Sumner, one in Hebron, one in Canton. We had seventeen BLS calls, fifteen ALS calls. We did have to call for mutual aid seven times and we provided mutual aid twice. It's not a staffing issue. Oftentimes it's what ALS. My report, uh, I completed the one transfer station operator training in October. Um, I completed the annual requirement of the general assistance fundamentals training on December ninth. Thrilling. Um, as you all know, I implemented the town cloud agenda for meetings. So far I've been really happy with it. I hope you guys are as well.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Um, the window replacement, I know I talked about this a couple of months ago. We were. Looking at like the middle of December to replace those twelve windows downstairs. I got an email from Anderson that. Asked if I had sent the deposit check yet. Well, I was still, I was still waiting on the state to give us the final green light, which they finally did. There were some issues with LCP tracker, but. They're going to come in on Christmas Eve and take some final measurements, put those into production and I'm thinking six to ten weeks. So. Um, they'll tent off the windows and do one at a time if we want to, or we can discuss that as we get closer. Met with Catherine Mardozza from Abcog on December fourth. Uh, as you all know, the community resilience partnership requires a. Renewal every couple of years. We were at that point, so I did, I went through the, the questionnaire and the um. Target items and completed that and resubmitted it. So we're all recertified now. Manny's completed all the testing that he needs to, and he is now officially a state certified LPI. So he's no longer operating on a temporary certification. He actually is certified. Uh, he's also been testing out of the code enforcement modules and he's on track to meet his. He'll be fully certified before his timeframe's up. Technically, he's already considered a code enforcement officer. He just has to hit those other modules that affect Buckfield. For those that don't know, the three withdrawal committees met on December third for their first joint meeting. Bob was there. It's pretty productive. They.
I think so, yeah.
We formed a, the first subcommittee they formed was the legal exploration because obviously they need a lawyer. Um. I was there just to watch, but I did interject a couple of times, especially when it came to finding an attorney, because each town has their own. Uh, procurement policies and just because we got approval to spend up to a certain amount of money doesn't mean we can just. Make those decisions. So they're gonna, they're currently working on an RFP. It'll probably be a fast track RFP and then once they get proposals and they make a recommendation, I'll bring it to you guys for final approval. They're meeting again on Thursday. This meeting's in Sumner. It's rotating Buckfield Hartford Sumner. So last time it's Hartford, it's in Summer. Next time it'll be in Buckfield and they're going with that BHS. Just because it's easy. On December ninth, I met with the librarian or the library director as well as Dan Marino. Been a while, but as some of you may remember, the friends of the library have paid for a feasibility study with the select board's approval. Um, new different uses for the library. Obviously, it's restricted by its space. He presented a few draft options of what it could look like to, you know, just hypotheticals. Um, he did ask my opinion on what I thought would be the, the next step in the process. Uh, and. The key thing is, is like, there's no real boundary survey. So I said, I, I would think that getting a survey of the property to know what you actually have there is, is would be a start. So. I think the friends is looking at. Contributing a portion of that, finding donations or whatever to do it. And potentially, I mean, I don't know how much survey is going to cost for that property. We'll see if it's something that maybe the town can pay a little bit to just because it is our property. But that's kind of where they're at now. Um, he did, he had a lot of work done. Um, so that's kind of where they're at. And then I kind of hit on the quickest and most directly to report a road issue to the town. Is using the form on the website. I understand some people don't use the internet, but most of the people that. Have issues typically reported on Facebook. I don't hover, I mean, believe it or not, I don't hover over that all the time, but if you submit it in the form, you guys all have access to it. I have access to it and I can see it immediately. So. That would be the quickest way to log it and show that it's been reported to the town. Yes, Neil.
So if there was someone who did not. Use the internet. Should they, do they call the town office and verbally express it and it could be written down?
Yes. So if it's during regular business hours, they can call the town office and then the ladies know how to go on that form and type that information. Um, the two things that I request are. Primarily for follow up to is a name and some way of contacting them, whether that's email or phone because.
In case you have a clarifying question.
Exactly. Uh, the other thing is if it's after hours, uh, you know, county has my phone number, so. If it's an emergency and something that needs to be addressed, if it's an emergency, call nine one one and the fire department will go take care of it. But if it's something that I need to get public works out on. County will call me or they'll call Preston and get it taken care of, especially if it's during a storm. Um, we had an incident the other day on a private road. Uh, where we had a call and the road wasn't plowed and rescue requested that public works come down to plow it out because we had to get in there. And they took care of it. But it was an emergency situation and that's why it took place. If anybody has any questions, that's why. So little things like that, like if it's an emergency in the after hours, you know, obviously call dispatch. Uh, but other than that, that's the quickest way. It keeps it documented for me. I know when it was reported and then if I get multiple reports from multiple people, obviously it's an ongoing issue that needs to be resolved and. Um, and then I print every one of those out and I have a binder. And I go over it with Preston and we keep track of what's been taken care of and what hasn't, what we can't address, like paving a road that we have no funds for. Um, but it just, it keeps it clean.
So any road issue at all?
Yeah.
Use this forum?
Yep. That's the easiest way. I get a million emails a day, but this, this logs it in a spreadsheet that's easily trackable.
Thank you.
And then other than that, I just want to say Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everybody because as I said.
Enjoy your vacation.
As of Friday, I'm going on vacation until.
Thank you.
Oh, did? No, okay, I didn't. Oh, actually, there's one more thing. I did put the financials for the month like I started last month. So all that information is on the agenda packet on the website if anybody wants to see it. Uh, but basically everything um is looking good as far as budget wise. Public Works is a little high, but you'll also notice that we also paid for the paving already this year, so that was a big chunk of that budget. So it would be uh further ahead than that. But so far we've expended uh two million, four twenty-three, six, ten, and we have an unexpended balance of two million, nine hundred and ninety-nine. So if you look at the twelve months, we're right where we need to be. Um, and if you look through all the departments, even like rescue, for example, they've expended two thirty-eight. They have an unexpended balance of two fifty-six. So everybody's right in line where they should be. Nothing that's sticking out. Uh, the only concerns I have this year really, it centers around public works breakdowns. If, you know, if the trucks break down and they got to be fixed, I'd, we're going to find the money, but. We're doing the best we can to try and make sure that nothing goes over budget. Revenues, we've collected about fifty percent, a little more than fifty percent for local revenues, so we're ahead of schedule on that. Uh, state revenues, we've collected more than fifty percent on that. So revenue wise, we're ahead of projections. Um, and then we've collected roughly forty-eight percent of the property taxes as of the end of November. So. Everything looks really good this year.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? And those opposed, no. And the total on that is uh. Three hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and then ninety-five cents. Which also includes our RSU payment. Approval of the minutes from the December second select board meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the December second, two thousand and twenty-five select board meeting. I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Approval of the amended library committee bylaws. Right here.
It's a markup version, so it shows you what the changes are.
We'll make a motion that we approve the amended library committee bylaws. I'll second.
Further discussion?
Curious to know what brought this about.
Well, believe it or not, all these committees are supposed to be reviewing and making and address the changes on an annual basis and. We haven't really done that much. So uh, this actually was sent to us by Bill Glass. After the library committee approved it in October and I, it went to the town clerk and she thought I got it and so. It was just an oversight, so it really should have been addressed in October, but. That's why. They had some changes. I think Bill made some comments. Uh, let me pull it up. Was it the first section? They struck a bunch of verbiage or the second under purpose? Yeah, he, they, the library committee felt that that first sentence really. Drove what the purpose of that committee was, um, which was to support the staff. So that's why they struck that out.
It doesn't appear that any of the changes um. Were content.
No.
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't change anything.
It's language, they just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, like consolidating CMB under secretary. And then adding in um. The section about a staff member participating in all committee meetings, which is what Kathy does anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor? The appointments.
Make a motion that we appoint Karen McCafferty to the recreation committee for a one-year term.
I'll second. Further discussion?
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank.
So I have a, this is just a piddly thing, but she has the one-year term under planning board check as opposed to under the recreation committee. And I'm not sure if that matters or not.
Considering she also checked recreation committee.
Yeah, I think she did so. I, I can tell you, she has no interest in being on the planning board. I didn't catch that until you said that.
Yeah, I noticed it the other day and I thought, oh, we.
Bye.
So we could fix that clerical.
Yes, I would suggest.
If Karen decides she also wants to be on the planning board, by all means.
Yeah. No, are you guys noticed that?
I don't think Karen would just approve it.
Yes.
I just wanted to. Why, I don't know people in town.
Yes, it's, it's.
Yeah, I believe. So we'll just talk to them, not talk to them. We'll help her along.
I'll let her know that she's been appointed to the planning board tonight.
All right. All those in favor? Other business?
I have some other business. I would make a motion that January first, we open nominations for the Boston Post cane.
I will second that.
Thank you. Um, we created a, for those who missed it, we created a new policy surrounding the Boston Post cane. The historical society and some others have come to us. About reviving this tradition. Um. So we drafted the policy, but never officially opened nominations. I've now developed a nomination form. It's in all your inboxes. It falls in line with the coordinates of the policies we made. If it is enacted or if we open nominations on January first of two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, according to the policy, people have sixty days to get it in, no later. So the nomination period would close on March second, which is a Monday. Um, but it, you know, could be submitted digitally for those who um aren't, you know, aren't going to break into the town office on Monday or over the weekend. Uh. Um, so yeah, that just about sums it up. It should be in all your inboxes. I have a little poster we can post as well. Try to get the word out. Basically, um. You have to be over the age of eighty to meet the requirements. Um, there are some other policies and procedures. It's all outlined in the nomination form, so we'll kind of. Start to get the word out. You can nominate yourself.
For those people listening who don't know what this is. Could you just give a little blurb?
Yeah, the editor of the Boston Post back in. A long time ago, I want to say it was the seventeen hundreds. I don't have it in front of me right now. Um, he sent a letter to around seven hundred select boards throughout New England. Offering a cane to recognize the oldest citizen in the town or municipality. Buckfield was one of the municipalities that uh reached back out to him, so we now have this Boston Post cane to be um. Given essay in quotes. It still belongs to the town, um, even when you are honored with it. But, you know, we'll have like a little certificate. Your name will go on a plaque. Um, I've talked to the historical society about housing the post itself, the post cane itself. In their um. Uh, space over here, but um it's up to the winner of um. The cane to decide, you know, if they want like a private ceremony with family, um, where they want it to be, if they want it to be more public, I'd say we'd be open to that. I think it would be fun to maybe do something in tandem with the events committee. Um, should the honoree so choose? Um, yeah, anything else you want to add?
Thank you, O'Neil. According to your form, I was trying to pull it up just so that people could see what.
Oh, perfect. Um, so yeah, if you have someone in your life that you think would qualify for this, you're welcome. To nominate them, although you will have to provide proof of their age and residency. This is not, um, if you, if the honoree lives in a retirement home, that's okay, as long as they have an established history in Buckfield and lived. In Buckfield up until uh their residency in a nursing or retirement home. I think that just about sums it up.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? Thank you very much. Bring that up.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Other, other business? Bob?
Just as a heads up. We approve people for boards here. I should let you know that we did have a life protection binding board. Where's the April I had? Personal reason for the. Just so it's like boys or. You'll have enough for four.
All right. Thank you for the notice.
All right, any other business? Public comment? Nothing, all right.
And just remind everybody, it's on the agenda, but I think I hit on it earlier, but uh Thursday. December eighteenth at six thirty PM at the Sumner Town Office will be the next RSU withdrawal meeting.
Yep.
Oh, and I want to mention, we do officially have. Oh, and I want to mention, we do officially have a swap shop ad hoc committee. We currently have four members. There's space for three more. If you are still interested, please feel free to submit an application. Um, I have a little interest form on the Town of Buckfield Facebook page. I don't know if it made it to the website. We can make that happen. Um, just to kind of gather interest of people who are willing to, um, you know, listen in on meetings. You don't necessarily have to join the committee. Three spaces left if you do want to. Um, and, uh, you know, potentially volunteer, uh, lend financial, um, assistance. Penny Horse Fall does still have a GoFundMe active. You should be able to just Google Town of Buckfield Swap Shop GoFundMe, and it popped up for me, first result, but, um, if not, it is included in the little graphic I have on the Facebook page, as well as the posters here in the town office.
Spin out that. Sumner did approve those bylaws and did duly appoint all the members, so.
Thank you.
It's official.
All right.
Nice.
Nothing else? All right, so I'll make a motion that we adjourn at six fifty-nine PM.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you.
Oh, thank you.